Going to call the meeting to order. It is 7:02, according to our official clock. And this meeting is held in Village Hall under the open meetings law. And if there's anything else official I'm supposed to say, I hope someone will remind me. And the first order of business is approving the minutes. We have the July 12, 2021 Village Board Meeting Minutes. And we also have the June 17 and the July 15 Village Board Workshop Meeting Minutes. I know you all had them emailed to you. May I have a motion to approve the three minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, question? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. And next is Treasurer Ray with the Treasurer's Report. And just a note, yeah, if you turn away from the microphone, you aren't heard anymore. So keep at it.
The Treasurer's Report for the month of July. The account balances as of the 31st of July were as follows. The general fund, $1,257,542.69. One of the main, besides the tax revenues, which are currently at 94% of budget, a main input was from the American Rescue Plan Act. We got 50%, which represented $99,644.16. We'll get the other 50% next year. In terms of the water fund, $191,001.74. Trust and agency, $23,105.40. Petty cash, $69.34. Village Green, $4,502.92. Hardscrabble, $2,050.85. Health insurance, $4,011.30. And the sewer fund, $17,197.09. The reserve checking balances at the end of the month, they haven't changed much from the month before. Fire department, $5,033.13. Police, $14,584.57. Highway, $20,785.97. Snow reserve, $3,279.44. Tower reserve, $17,711.12. Unemployment, $4,544.6. Court reserve, $3,298.54. And the office reserve, $972.51. The monthly expenses for July. General fund, $263,838.65. I'd like to point out that the last payment was made for the Village Hall, $2,007.18 million bond, which was $173,570. So the building that we are currently enjoying for our meetings and where we work is fully paid for.
Woo-hoo!
In terms of the monthly expenses for the water fund, $49,541.65. Trust and agency, $2,232.16. And sewer, $9,845.70. That concludes the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Ray. And I want to say an extra special thank you to Ray this month because I know that he was tearing his hair out dealing with our QuickBooks at the end of, middle of last week. And I'll just mention that we are currently using the desktop version, the desktop 2015 version, and we are looking at upgrading our QuickBooks version. But thank you, Ray, for persevering and getting us our regular report. Do we need to, we need, I need a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in, any questions? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, now it's on to me with the police report. For the month of July 2021, there were 374 incidents. 263 of those were in the village, 105 in the town, and six in the village of Tivoli. Just to be clear, in the village of Tivoli, we would never be the lead, the lead officers, we would, we would only be there for backup. UTTs, remind me again what UTT is, this traffic?
Uniform traffic ticket.
Uniform traffic ticket, thank you. There were 64 incidents, 35 in the village, a total of one parking ticket, and in the town, 28. And then arrests, there were four, two in the village of Red Hook and two in the town. And then I just wanted to mention the Economic Development Committee. I see that's under my, under my section. And the town's Economic Development Committee has returned to meeting in person here at the Village Hall. They returned on July 28. And the town EDC gave their response to the Intermunicipal Task Force's report or recommendation on short-term rentals, gave it to the, to the town of Red Hook. The town will be discussing short-term rentals, I believe, tomorrow and probably subsequently. Malcorca and I have been attending those meetings. And at the last one, which was last Wednesday, I requested input on the question of opting in or out of the marijuana retail establishments and/or the onsite consumption establishments. And there was a good discussion, and the group agreed to discuss further. And they also suggested a public forum to get public feedback. All are aware of Hardscrabble Day on September 18. And there are several businesses that are reporting difficulty in finding employees. And everyone was reminded that everyone has been through a lot, businesses are doing their best, they really don't want to turn your business away or serve you poorly, but they ask to please be kind. And I thought that was an especially important message to share tonight. And lastly, the EDC will be hosting a meeting on August 31st, it's a Tuesday, at 3:00 PM, with businesses to discuss their needs going forward. That meeting is going to be at Village Hall. Contact Christina Ducharme, who's the Chair of EDC, if interested in attending.
What's the date of that?
August 31st.
At what time?
And that's it for my reports, and on to Trustee Noonan.
Okay, the Village Building Department. The building permits issued were 12. This is for the month of July. Building permits, 12. Certificates of-
Can you hear it? Will, get closer to the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. It usually isn't a problem for me. Building permits issued, 12. Certificates of occupancy issued were one. Certificates of compliance, four. Municipal searches, two. One order to remedy. Fire inspections were, two fire inspections were done. Senior housing was completed, and this fly is bothering me. And Elmendorf Historic Red Hook completed. There were no building complaints. The planning board met on July 8th. There was a site plan for a property at 7468 South Broadway that was tabled until August 12th. I believe that's this week. The zoning board of appeals met on July 22nd. Resolution granting a variance with conditions by the ZBA Board for property on 28 Prince Street was, was passed. And resolution to uphold the determination of the code enforcement officer approved by the ZBA for the same property. The building department, there were nine building permits issued. There were two certificates of occupancy searches conducted. And the fees, total fees collected in July was $1,156.50. Unfortunately, I have not heard anything from emergency services, from the, from the fire company, nor Veterans Affairs. I have no report for those.
Okay, thank you. On to Deputy Mayor Kavolchik.
I'll start with the Village Green Committee. Monthly report, Village Green Committee's related budget accounts as of July 31st. Community beautification, we have $4,000. Shade tree contractual, $10,500. And our Village Green Committee checking account is $4,502.62. There was a Village Green Committee meeting held on July 24th at the Eat and Go Tent on North Broadway, and we reviewed the memo regarding a tree inventory of all trees existing and planted by the Village Green Committee. The latest tree inventory was conducted by the Hudson Valley Specialized Weekday Arborist Team, or SWAT, in 2009. Our Chair David Pearson contacted and responded to a memo inquiry from the New York State DEC Senior Forester on the 26th of July. We also made a preliminary list of potential tree planting sites for the 2021 Annual Fall Planting Day. Nine potential sites with a total of 14 trees were identified. Property owners on Elizabeth Street, Garden Street, Fairly Street, and North Broadway will be contacted prior to planting. And two memorial trees planted at Richard Abraham's Memorial Park that did not survive will also be replaced. And our committee member Brenda Cagle will assist the Village Green Committee with tree species selection. And just a reminder again, residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village right-of-ways, volunteering for planting days, or making a donation to support the Village Green Committee's various community beautification projects, may contact David Pearson, myself, or the Village Clerk. Our Highway Department Monthly Report for July, the Village Highway Department is picking up brush every first and third Monday of the month, and that's weather and schedule permitting. Residents are reminded to place lawn debris, leaves, and brush in separate piles curbside and not in the road. And please limit your brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, with tree branches no larger than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage, or construction material will not be picked up. And neighbors are encouraged to share a brush pile, and this will make pickup easier and quicker. A request from a resident on Cambridge Drive for children-at-play signs to be located on Cambridge Drive and Amherst Road has been received by the village. The Board of Trustees is currently reviewing recommended legal procedures and considering adding new signs in these areas. Revenue from the sale of scrap metal was received on July 13th in the amount of $539. The total revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal in fiscal year 2021/22 is We've only, we are anticipating $2,000 for the entire year, and I think we're, we're well on our way to seeing that plus more.
All right.
Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $37,428.11 has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal may contact the Village Highway Department at 758-8600 or the Village Clerk's Office. And the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request.
If I can just add on your first point about brush?
Sure.
It's not always Monday, but the Highway Department aims for the, as early as possible in the week.
Thank you.
And could I make a suggestion on that? The, with the brush pile? It might help us if we, we put something in the letter that goes out to the water people about sharing the brush pile?
The next letter will go out in September, the end of September. So that'll, that'll be focused on leaves.
Yeah.
Certainly.
But that's a good suggestion because you see a lot of smaller piles, and we can combine those. That would certainly-
Yep.
Help the Highway Department out.
We are, we are also working on the website, and so that would be important information to, to add to the website. Malcorca is doing yeoman's work on that.
Continuing with my reports, the Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force. Start with the Red Hook Sewer Project. Pre-construction meeting was held on July 9th in the Red Hook Village Building. Representatives from CT Mail, Carver Construction, Sostos Electric, the mayor and myself attended. And we reviewed the documents required by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and the United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development that require completion and submission. We also reviewed remaining minority and women-owned business enterprise documents prior to the issuance of a notice to proceed. We reviewed the schedule for fund disbursements and payments to contractors during the construction process. We discussed mobilization estimates and start dates for construction. We discussed shop drawings, seminal review and approval processes, and the availability of materials during pandemic and post-pandemic periods. We did review Part 1 of the contract agreement, general conditions, including notification and communication with property owners during construction. Weekly updates from contractors of current schedules and construction progress, expected quality of property restoration, including pre-construction, post-construction documentation of each project, and temporary construction easements. An additional pre-construction meetings will be held once the notice to proceed has been issued to further develop construction process, schedules, and public notification and communications. And we also discussed coordinating the easement map with the construction map prior to construction. A meeting was also held on July 31st with the property owner in the sewer service area and with our village engineers, the mayor and myself. The property owner asked if the sewer main location could be relocated to another location on the property. Consultations with the village engineer determined that minor adjustments can be made in the field. Consultations with the village attorney, however, determined that minor adjustments can be made, but major revisions would require an amended easement map. Costs associated with revising the easement map, attorney's fees, and refiling costs, totally not more than $500, would be the responsibility of the property owner to provide. So we're encouraging people to not make any major changes because it will cost money, and we've all had time to review those easement maps and, and walk through the whole process. So the Village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Maintenance and Improvement Project. A meeting was held on July 23rd in the Village Building with Delaware Engineering. We reviewed the map showing updated hydrant and valve locations based on a survey conducted by Delaware Engineering. We discussed developing a schedule of repairs and improvements and designating priorities. We discussed developing a methodology to track repairs and maintenance intended to be updated on an annual basis. These will include hydrant flushing, valve exercising, catch basin cleaning, street cleaning, parking lot and stop bar repainting. And we also discussed funding options. An updated engineering report will be completed by Delaware Engineering, and a bond resolution will be considered by the Board of Trustees. These are necessary to be completed prior to submitting to agencies for funding consideration. And this is to pick up projects that we've looked at in the past. One is the interconnect between the town's water system and the village's water system. Repainting, removing the paint and repainting the tower on Tower Street. Some minor repairs, valve replacements, that we have a list of through a survey. So we have a considerable amount of work, and hopefully we can get funding for that and move forward and get that done. The Red Hook Solar CSA. Meetings were held on July 1st and 31st at the Red Hook Solar CSA located on the Village of Red Hook's Firehouse Lane Wellfields to review the condition of trees and shrubbery planted to screen the photovoltaic panel arrays from neighboring properties. A list of trees and shrubs along with a map locating plantings that have not satisfactorily survived since initial planting was prepared. A certified arborist has been, has also inspected the plantings to confirm and verify their conditions. A request to replant these trees and shrubs, still under warranting for the landscape contractors involved with the solar project, is being drafted for submission. On the Intermunicipal Task Force side, both Charlie and I sit on the task force. There were no meetings of the task force held during the month of July. A memo from Green Planning Incorporated of July 28th was circulated to members of the task force, then the Red Hook Area Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully, the EDC got a copy of that as well. Information was obtained from host compliance based on a survey of over 100 platforms listing short-term rentals in the Red Hook area. The host compliance mid-July report indicates the following number of short-term rentals listed in each Red Hook community. In the town of Red Hook, the number of units was 60, the number of listings was 84. In the village of Red Hook, the number of units was four, the number of listings was five. And in the village of Tivoli, the number of units were 12 and the number of listings was 22. A map will be prepared to show the geographical locations of short-term rental units listed in Red Hook. This date will be reviewed by the town board to assist in deliberation and public comment meetings regarding short-term rentals regulations in the town of Red Hook.
Brent, what's, what is the distinction between units and listings?
I think there's certain number of units that were available, and they could have had multiple listings on different platforms.
Oh, on different sites?
Yeah. And then on my shared services monthly report, there were no meetings of the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee or the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of July 31st is $2,324,243.6. So we've seen a substantial increase in this amount since last March. I believe properties are still selling well and will continue to build a fund for a number of things that we could use it for, mostly as a town project, but we do have listings of properties that could take advantage of that funding within the village of Red Hook. The Town of Red Hook Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, or LWRP, Working Group. A meeting was held on July 14th via Zoom. We reviewed and discussed and responded to the New York State Department of State's memo of July 2nd regarding revisions of amended Town of Red Hook LWRP. We discussed applying for an extension to complete public informational meetings and required actions by the Town of Red Hook Council. A completion date of December 31st, 2022, is anticipated. There were no meetings of the Northern Duchess Alliance Executive Committee and the Village of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee. Both Karen and I sit on that. Meetings were held on July 2nd, 9th, and 30th in the Village Building with our land use attorney. We reviewed proposed amendments to Chapter 200, Section E, which are the definitions for accessory dwelling and apartments. We reviewed and proposed amendments to Section 219, which are apartments. We reviewed and proposed amendments to Section 231, multi-families, dwellings in the general business, and proposed gateway business districts. Discussed amending the Red Hook Village Comprehensive Plan, utilizing its simplified and broad-based format. We reviewed definitions for single-family and two-family dwellings in the R10,000 and R20,000 districts, and discussed creating standards for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom dwelling units for multifamily uses in the general business district and the proposed gateway business district. And there were no meetings of the Salt Hill Watershed Community during the month of July. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. As always, you are involved in many things. We are, we in the village are grateful. Trustee Lang is not with us tonight. I believe Trustee Kevol is going to be reporting-
Yes.
-on his behalf?
Yes, sorry. I'm, you can hear me, right?
Just stay close to the mic.
Yes. So I'm reading his reports for the materials management. For the month of July 2021, we had 6.85 tons of garbage and 2.9 tons of recycling. 5.4, I mean, .54 tons of cardboard and 1.23 tons of newspaper and 1.13 tons of commingled recycling. And then for the water reports, during the month of July, the water treatment facility treated 8,025, no, 8,025-
You had that right. It was 8,025,000.
Yeah, it has a decimal, that's why I got.
Oh.
Total gallons, which is an average of 258,900 gallons per day. All bacterial samples for the month were collected and transported to Smith Environmental Laboratory, Hyde Park, New York. All results were negative. During the month of July, the water treatment plant used 95 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. The average daily use was 3.06 gallons per day. You can tell I haven't read those reports before. So then I'm moving on to my reports. Red Hook Together did not meet for the month of August. The Human Relations Committee. Human Relations Committee met a fourth time on August 5th, 2021. We finalized language for the application form and are preparing details for a booth at Hardscrabble Day. In advance of publishing the forms, we will be setting up a contact email so that we can accept digitally submitted forms. Hardscrabble Events Committee. Hardscrabble Day will be on Saturday, September 18th, 2021. Please visit Hardscrabble website, hardscrabbleday.org for more information. Stay informed by liking our Facebook page at facebook.com/hardscrabbleRH and/or follow us on Instagram at @redhookhardscrabble. Sponsorship opportunities and vendor application forms are posted on the website. Any community members interested in volunteering for the day of the event or participating in the Hardscrabble Parade can email the committee at hardscrabble@redhooknewyorkvillage.org. The Red Hook Public Library was granted $50,000 from the Duchess County's Learn, Play, Create Initiative, designed to distribute ARA monies to youth. The Red Hook Public Library will be using the money to do work to increase the capacity of the children's garden, repair the floor in the children's library, and make upgrades to the furniture in the children's library and new teen room computer. Teen takeover is a success thanks to some dedicated Red Hook High School students who plan activities every Sunday afternoon at the library when it is open only to teens. Last week, they grilled pizza, and later this month, they're planning a tie-dye extravaganza. Great, that's it.
Thank you very much. Now on to regular business. And having looked through the last year and a half of meeting minutes, I'm sad to say how many blank pages we have left. And tonight, we have two more blank pages to add to that list, to be left in the memory of Jack Gilfeather and Mark Morando. Deputy Mayor Kavolchik, if you'd like to just say a few words about the two of them.
Yes, I'll start with Mark Morando. Mark was a professional colleague. He was an engineer in his private practice, and he also served on our planning board. And for years, he was also Chair of the Planning Board, lived over at Red Hook Estates, and was a good friend and a great volunteer for the village, and we'll miss him and his service quite a bit. Jack Gilfeather, Jack served on the school board. He served as town supervisor for many years. He served for the, in the village of Red Hook for 10 years, and in his capacity, was also deputy mayor. He was deputy mayor when this very building that was paid off this month was dedicated. Jack was a good friend of mine and a mentor of mine as well. And I served on committees in the town when he was supervisor, and he helped me when it first started as a trustee here in the village. So for both Mark and Jack, they're both will be missed, and we'll dedicate a blank page in their memory in our, in our minutes, so.
Thank you. And it is people like Jack and Mark who make the village go, and we are very grateful for their service. The next piece of business is declaring surplus. There's a small chance that this has already been declared surplus, but I'd rather do it twice than not at all. It's a 2001 Dodge service truck. I have the VIN number, which I will go in the minutes. I won't, I won't bore you with the reading of it. It has an eight-foot reading service body, an eight-foot Fisher Minute Mount plow, and a DeWalt gas-powered air compressor. It has approximately 142,500 miles- It has approximately 142,500 miles on it. And I would like to, we just purchased a new service truck, a new used service, no, a new service, new, no, used service truck, sorry, and thus making this surplus. So I'd like to motion, I'd like a motion to declare this truck surplus.
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Oh, whatever. Any questions, discussions?
So the revenue generated will be placed in the Highway Reserve account?
Yes.
Excellent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Highway surplus. I'll give that to you. The next item of business is the marijuana opt-in, opt-out discussion. On the agenda, it says schedule a public hearing. That is a formal proceeding, actually. What I meant was a public information session where the public can come and get more information and also share their, share their points of view. Would love to know if anyone had a thought as to when we should do that? As you, just to recap, if we want to opt out either of a retail, marijuana retail establishment, marijuana or cannabis, it seems to be used interchangeably, or an onsite consumption establishment, we have to pass a village law opting out and have it in place by December 31st, 2021. We can opt back in later afterwards, but we can, once, if we have not opted out, we cannot opt out later. There are, the, there is a license procedure. It is, any establishment would be under the zoning laws that are in place, and, but we, we don't have a whole lot of time if we are going to choose to opt out. Anyone have a thought as to when we should hold the public information session?
I think if it would be televised on Panda, it would probably be good just to get the word out to the public, and if there's any questions that come forward as a result of it being watched on Panda, or, you know, they could be addressed to the board at a later date. I don't know when, what, hopefully we have a light agenda next month as well, but who knows?
So you would, you would, you would propose to do it at our next board meeting?
If we're prepared.
Which would be September 13th?
And we can always keep the public informational meeting open, you know, and here for two months, so, so if there are questions that come up that we can't answer at that time, perhaps we can do some research on that and follow up as well. Just a suggestion, but.
Sure, any other?
I agree, just because there's not that much time to, unless we were to set something before that, if we wanted to actually engage with the public on it, I think either next meeting or before that, which is, August is really hard time to
August, August is hard, beginning of September is hard.
Yeah, it's cool.
Trustee Noonan, any thoughts?
Yes, I did some math with the calendar. And if we're going to follow all the necessary requirements, that may include a referendum, we need to do it as soon as possible. I don't think we, I, I understand August is a difficult time as well as the beginning of September, but I think we need to do this quickly, as quickly as possible. I don't know when we have our next workshop, but if we could do it then, that would be great, but maybe a special session would be called for in this. The time, the time limits, if we're going to be, get in before December 31st are pretty tight.
So our, our next workshop is August 19th, so next Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, sorry, that is correct. What if we had a public information session both at the workshop and at our September meeting? And we encouraged people to send in comments, either by calling or email, and just start getting the word out, maybe making a flyer to put it around? So that we can gather as much information and comments as we can get so that we can have a sense at our September meeting? We can do the information session at the beginning of the meeting.
And I think Brent's suggestion is a good one to put something on Panda
Put it on Panda.
It's our next workshop's Thursday.
Right, a week and a half from today. So if that were going to be on Panda, I would have to talk to Panda, that would be an extra session, so I can, I can reach out afterwards. Well, since we have those meetings scheduled, why don't we plan on having at the beginning of both a public information session on August 19th and September 13th? And if we need to call a special board meeting to, to make decisions, then we can do that.
And would somebody be leading that information session?
Unless someone were to raise their hand, I, I would expect that I would be leading that session.
Yeah.
Happy to have someone raise their hand if they'd like. All right, so let's, let's do that. Great. And just to reiterate, if anyone has any comments or thoughts, to please send them in. I know we, we may have a comment in a little bit as well. Okay, two other things that are not actually on the agenda, but one, two things came up today. One is the Old Dutch Garden Club reached out to me today to offer to decorate the business district for, with fall decorations in advance of Hardscrabble Day. I think that's a one, I think that's a wonderful idea, and I just want to make sure that it's done. They have not fixed what they had in mind, cornstalks, ribbons, fall things. I will contact business owners in the corner district to see what, what, what would be preferred, but I'm, I'm thrilled that the, that the Old Dutch Garden Club has, has reached out and has that in mind, because I think that would be a wonderful addition to our village. I don't know if you, anyone has any comments about, about that?
I think it'd be great.
And then if you haven't noticed, normally we don't have as much light coming through the south side of the village hall windows. Over the last couple of weeks, the large tree that was out there that's, that roots were disrupting our septic system on a regular basis is now no longer there and can no longer disrupt our septic system and our plumbing. And so we are going to be putting a fence around the compressors as both to make it a little more attractive and for protection. And then the other item that we're currently looking at is at the water tower, there's no gate in the fence wide enough for our mowing equipment, so we are looking at quotes to add a gate so that our equipment can get in there and, and tend to the, tend to the weeds and the grass. And then lastly, it was mentioned that we have our American Rescue Plan Act money in the bank. That is not money that we just get to spend willy-nilly. We do need to have a plan, and there are specific requirements as to what we can spend it on and what we can't spend it on. One thing we can spend it on is sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure. Between sewer and water, I'm sure that we could, we have plenty of projects that would more than make up for that amount. But we have time to, there's also a calculation that we need to make about what our lost revenue is. It is a very specific calculation that is on the federal website that we have done a, a quick summary of, but we need to do it formally. That funding is referred to as lost revenue, and that can be spent on anything. The remaining money needs to be infrastructure spending. So we need to start having some discussions more seriously about what we are going to choose to spend that money on. But just so you know, we need to have a plan by 2024, and we need to have spent the money by 2026. So we do have some time. We also need to have very clear backup, because should the federal government decide to do an audit and it's not spent the way they indicated it can be spent, they can ask for it back. So we want to make sure that we do this right. Does anybody else have any regular business? Hearing none? This is the time for public comment? Do I need to formally open? No, public comment. Please, up to the podium, grab the microphone.
I am an EDC member, but I'm speaking now as a community member. I live in Mylan, but I do have interest in the business of, of Red Hook because I do the Red Hook Rhinebeck tourist map. And I'm very anxious that we do not opt out of the cannabis law. It will really, having marijuana sales, if it be a retail store or a lounge, I'm not sure if that's the right term, we will be bringing business into the Village of Red Hook, and that's what we need. Just, just having one business will bring people for that, and then they'll shop at other places, and it'll really, really inject a lot of enthusiasm into the village, and I think it's really important that we do this. The state has not given us the laws yet, and the, obviously you people will be going through those and seeing what works, but we need to have that excitement of marijuana in this town. We have the college, but also people of all ages use marijuana. They're using it now. So if we can reap some benefits, I think it'll be very exciting for us. So I could go on, but I won't.
I'm smiling.
Thank you very much. Any, anyone else for public comment? Okay, thank you. So that's the end of our public comment session. I'm going to move that we, and I don't remember all the right language, that we pay our bills at the
After audit.
After audit, thank you. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We do have an executive session. We do not have any other business. And so I am going to move that we go into executive session. I think I need a motion for that.
Yeah. And for what reason?
We are going into, this is personnel issues, including discussing the contract negotiations for the highway and the police department.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. With that, we are going into executive session. And again, Panda, since we will not be returning with any business, you may turn it all off?